Hey Jonathan, hi Lisa, I see you over there too. I don't think I have to let anybody in, I think they'll just be able to keep coming in. Hey Jeremy, did you get the baby down?
Oh yeah, yeah.
Good.
Well that's right, I'm solo tonight.
I'm home now, but it was the evening hour that I had to, yeah.
Oh yeah, the witching hour.
Well, yeah, exactly. I just, we just keep feeding her. That's like, that's the key really, just keep food coming.
Yeah, it works for a lot of things in life, really.
Really does, yeah.
Alright, well, why don't we get started? Hi Kristen, hey Lisa, hi Rebecca, how are you guys, or Becky? Welcome tonight. I will just start with my intro spiel, which is that this is a a committee meeting, which we tend to kind of operate a little differently than the regular board meetings. This is really a work time and it's, it's the only way that the, the board members can kind of make progress and have, have discussions about how to, how to solve issues or, or move, like sort of do planning. But so far with these meetings, this is our third one, we've, we've found time easily for our attendees who are not in the committee to participate in meaningful ways. So I would anticipate that we'll be able to do that again tonight. And I'm looking forward to hearing from the people, not just on the committee, but also in the audience. I think our first order of business is just to approve the minutes from a few weeks ago. And oh, I've pulled up Tim, Jonathan, or Jeremy, is one of you guys willing to screen share the minutes that we'll be taking on this meeting?
Sure, I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you, sorry.
Oh, no problem at all. Just give me a second and I'll get it set up.
And I can start typing in some of...
Okay, just gotta go back to Zoom and share my screen here.
So what we've been doing, if you're in the audience, is we have a shared document among the committee members that we just take notes on, and so we all can just edit that as we go. And we can also all see what we're working off of, which has been nice because we can just make sure that we're all kind of hearing the same thing. So, let's see. So our first order of business would be to approve the minutes from the six, or the June 15th meeting. Would anybody be willing to move that? I know it's a long time ago now, but...
Yeah, we got to make a motion.
Yeah, just...
The committee had moved to approve the minutes.
And a second?
Actually, I wasn't there.
Okay, Jonathan, are you comfortable?
I, sure, I haven't really read them, but yes, I mean, I read them at the time, I think.
I think we all, I'm sure we, I'm, yeah, I'm sure we all read them very carefully when they were first published. At, our, let's see, hearing, no objection, do we, are we comfortable passing or approving the minutes? I hear no objection.
Yeah, sure, no objection.
Great.
Why, is somebody else sharing the screen? I'm a little bit lost here.
Oh, I'm not, I'm...
No, I just don't know how to use Zoom, I think.
Maybe your video is off, is that what's going on? Thank you.
I, I don't have, yeah, I don't, I'll keep working on it.
Okay.
On my laptop I do, but I don't have that set up. Oh, there we go, I'm there, I finally figured it out, sorry everybody.
Well, no, it's fine, we're a couple of weeks out of practice. Thank you for doing this. Okay, that's great, thanks. Okay. So now the, oh, you know, that's, that's the minutes from last time.
Gotcha.
If you can find it, I think it says, yeah, you've got it, thank you.
Sure.
So for our audience, we're just typing as we go. So the first big topic that we wanted to talk about was the the list of questions for the seven, eight data packet. And I kind of was thinking that an easy place to start would be for me to cut and paste the questions we listed in the report that went to the board last week. So I will do that while we're looking at the minutes today, and that's just to change that formatting a little here, so it's not quite so long. Okay. Alright, so this is the list of questions that we came up with. At our June 15th meeting, it was shared in the report that the board looked at and basically sort of used as our discussion starting point at our last June meeting. And so at that meeting, we, we asked the board if they had any other questions that they wanted to add to the list. Do you guys, anybody have any notes from that time that they recall? I did take some notes too, so I can, I could share, but if you guys want to start.
I have some notes there.
Oh great.
Rather incomplete.
Yeah.
Sort of, but, and I don't remember exactly who, who raised each of these, but may not be relevant.
Yeah.
There was a question about the use of Harwood Union Middle School post-merger.
Okay, what I'll do is for now, I'll just write down everything we say and then we'll sort of decide, we can finalize what the list is gonna look like.
Okay.
Does that sound like a good approach?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, anybody else?
Another note that I have here is I don't know if this is, I don't know if this is already in the upper list, but is space for additional classrooms and specifically questions about music and specials.
Okay.
You know, I think there was, like in the previous plan, there was something about band and lunch, sharing the same room and things along the lines of that. I don't know if that's...
See that, number, bullet number two, is utilization of shared spaces.
There you go.
Music.
Yeah, we could just make, if we have any other spaces that we know we'd want to add, like one thing would might be the team common areas. Along that, those lines.
There was a question about the length of time in, in the pods. And I don't know what, like, does that, is that like in terms of years, or is that in terms of like hours of a day? I don't have notes on that, so I can't recall the, the context, whether that was...
Yeah, well, we do have a section, we may have that a little bit covered already, so we have modeling without the bond assumption. That sort of is like, let's, we're not really, we're not talking about this as if we're only using this for two years.
Right.
And then the other one would be the more details about the annex space appearance, how could it be used, what it's gonna cost, security. Maybe I'll put space planning. I think that's the term that they kind of use for that.
Yeah.
One question I heard that I appreciated was what happens to, what's the impact on the Cross at Brook five, six, if this goes through?
There was a a question about making sure that there was some discussion of trade-offs and strengths and weaknesses, recognizing that in any plan, there's, there may be certain trade-offs. I don't know if, yeah, that's covered above or not, but I, you know, I think sometimes in the materials that we've had out, there's sometimes the trade-offs are well-presented and other times they're it's more one-sided, which makes it seem more like an advocacy piece. So I think just making sure that we enumerate what, what the, what potential downsides there might be, could be
okay.
helpful, just in terms of community faith.
Yeah, and I do feel like a lot of our middle school stuff had that, but maybe not, a lot, maybe not as much in our, some of our other components. I feel like we saw a lot of pros, cons stuff when we were considering the...
Yeah, I agree.
The seven, eight question.
It's a good point. I appreciated that, I think, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's great feedback for them, that, that, that's a nice format for all of us.
Yeah.
There were a few questions I heard that didn't seem to me so much about the seven, eight merger, like what is the long-term goal of the merger? I don't know, or maybe, maybe that is, I'm not sure, how will more info change outcomes?
Can you say that again, I'm sorry?
Well, yeah, all I wrote down, this is the complete notes part. I wrote, what is long-term goal of merger? How will more info change outcomes? And I, I think that was outcomes for students. Do you guys remember that?
Yeah, I have the same note. It says, how will gathering more information change anything? But I don't know what it means exactly. I mean, I think yeah, I, I, I don't know how we can add that into sort of a request to the admin team, per se.
And I guess I think even in terms of the, what's the long-term goal of the merger, that's more of a board question, maybe than this, this data package idea. Like the, the data thing seems to me that it's more like we're asking for projections, we're asking for what you think the pros or cons are, and then it's sort of the board's job to figure out what the goals were and if this change would meet those goals. Does that seem right to you guys?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
We did, was it, was there a question at all, or have we entertained the question of what could we use as a surrogate, or, you know, an example of other school districts, right? I mean, obviously people have mentioned a great number of those school districts in the state, you know, have we decided there, there'd be one or two that you know, have all the ingredients that we have that we could, you know, learn from anybody else that's been through this. Regardless of Act 46, I guess, even, you know?
So seeing some model, are there some models? I didn't really hear that kind of question around the board table, but what do you guys think? When I look down, I'm looking at my handwritten notes, by the way.
I mean, again, I wasn't, I didn't participate in the last discussion, that's all, I'm just asking.
Just the one that was in the boardroom.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, I can't think of a reason not to explore or investigate if, if we do find, I mean, I'm not sure if there's anybody out there that isn't a, they, you know, like how many, you know, how many boxes do we need to check to make it sound similar, but if there is somebody out there in some district, I can't imagine not sort of exploring or at least looking at the questions they asked, you know what I mean? Like, I think that's a pretty healthy thing to do, if, if we can find an exemplar like that, that would be be an interesting foundation to, to jump off of, for sure.
Really, I guess the differentiator is we have two middle schools, right? And how many other districts are we gonna find that were, were heavy at middle school?
Well, I think probably, like you said, Tim, even separate from Act 46, I think that would be the, what would cause that, if anything, you know, in, in terms of Vermont's scale of school sizes and whatnot, would be a merger of districts that would call that into question.
So you're, you're wondering, are there other districts that have merged their middle schools recently? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's the question, that's the idea, it's just, is, is there somebody who's sort of asked similar questions or gone through a similar process before us? You know, I'm trying to think off the top of my head, if I can think of any right now, but I know that, like, when Williamstown and Northfield, or sorry, not Northfield, yeah, it was in Northfield, Roxbury, Roxbury merged with Montpelier, right? So Williamstown and Northfield went together and they had multiple high schools and middle schools, so that might be somewhere to look. Believe the Randolph District is going through some major restructuring right now, too.
Yeah. How does this fit into the seven, eight data package in that they basically have a month to provide this for us, do you think?
I don't know.
Just quick research, I, just because several school districts have been thrown, you know, out as, you know, using them for an example of one kind or another. So both from the board and, and from, you know, interest in public, so it's, you know, you got how deep do you have to go, but I mean, I think it's just a straightforward question, do we know of any other school districts in the last, I don't know, cut it off, five years, 10 years, that have had to, you know, merge, you know, middle schools?
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's it, that's the question. It's not, what, what do they do? How do they do it? What's their tack, whatever? It's just, are there, are there districts out there that we can pursue, you know?
Right, then we do the work, right? Then we can go fetch the information.
Yeah, I think you're right. I think, I think it's a very simple question that doesn't, we don't want a lot of elaboration on.
Yeah, sort of a yes or no, and a list, if there are, if there's, if it's a yes, then who, kind of thing.
Yes, if then, then this.
So is this question that we've, that I've been typing similar to what you, what you have in mind? Or I should say, does the admin, I guess?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna...
That are, should I even take out, that are similar to ours and just say that have had to merge middle schools?
Yeah, I think we're, we're sort of chopping the pool down if we say, so I just think, just starting with that basic question of any districts that have had to go through this in the past few years, would be a good starting point.
Okay, maybe we could just broaden it a little bit, which would just be to reconfigure, that feels like that might be in the spirit of what you're thinking about, Tim, but not be not narrow it down to only mergers, like maybe they switched to a six, nine, or something like that. Does that seem useful, Tim? Okay.
I have a note here that says something about bringing teachers in earlier, but I have no idea what it means, so, unless any of you, unless it rings any big bells.
Earlier in the process?
Oh yeah, there you go, thank you, Tim, but I don't know how that really impacts the data packet, I don't really think it does.
Yeah, that might be for the transition planning.
Yes.
Yeah, but one could argue that they're not asking any, they're not sitting here asking any questions, so just one of those I don't know, maybe that, that's kind of, you know, yeah, right, I mean we've kind of commented on when, when, when there will be community engagement. But do we is there value in having the teachers want to know some, you know, what, what the teachers want to know?
Well, you know, we've been pretty clear that we're developing this list of questions and and what the timetable is, and we have heard a little bit from them, and we'll, we'll get a chance to hear from people in the audience in a few minutes, probably, and the other thing is we do have, you know, one more opportunity between the time when the data packet comes back at the end of August, and then we were gonna do this sort of two-week review. Or no, it was like, we would, at the first meeting, look at the data packet, see if there's anything else that absolutely needs to be answered, and then the two weeks later, we would have all those additional answers and/or sort of stamp the data packet as like, we think this is good information to base our decision on. Right, that was kind of part of the process, so that, it's not like, if, if we, if teachers feel like they need to add questions that the, the committee, the board feels need to be added, there's still time to do that, it's not it hasn't totally left the left port yet, the ship. Although we're trying to get it as, the list is as, as finished as possible now, so that we don't, so that we'll have, you know, fairly complete work by the time the fall rolls around. Do we have any, are any of these questions that we've added today, things that we feel like shouldn't be in this data packet? Maybe they're sort of relevant to something else, or have we, as we've chatted, you know, edited them so that they do make the most sense to include?
I guess I just go back to that last point around the teachers, and is that a, is that a question that can be asked around how and when do faculty and staff become involved in this process? And that seems to me more like a better question than like, what, what questions do teachers have, or is that something that I think we can charge the admin team and sort of coming up with, like, what is that, what is their role? Or what is teacher's role, teacher and staff's role in this process? Like, maybe that's, that's a because I think I heard a lot of teachers come out and say that they actually approve of and appreciate the merger decision, they just wanted some input in how it sort of rolled out. So, you know, I think people on the board are gonna have questions about how, how faculty and voice, staff voice gets into this process. So I don't think it's, I don't think it's good to leave it out somehow, but I think that may be rewording that to be less of like, you know, what are teacher questions versus like, let's have the admin team ask, you know, sort of come up with some solutions around how, or proposals around how teacher and staff voice gets into this conversation. Just as a general, as a general piece, right? Like, how do we involve teachers and staff versus like...
Yeah, I agree, I think it's a reasonable question to ask the admin, and it comes right out of the meeting as well, right out of the discussion, so it's not like we're adding anything in. So I think that's a, that's a really good point, Jeremy.
So it seems to me that that's kind of connected to this, what will the transition look like? Or, because I, I don't need to lump them in, I'm not trying to bury anything, but those might be connected enough that they're almost part of the same.
Well, I wonder, because there's two, there's trend, there's the decision, and then there's the transition.
Okay.
And I think that we want the faculty and, I think you meant to say faculty and student voice there. Right? Is that what you meant? Yeah.
I mean, I meant faculty and staff, just because I think there is a distinction, you know, in the lingo of the business between faculty and staff, and I just want to make sure that staff, when we say faculty, that, like, you know, I don't want to leave out anyone else's voice who, who might be affected by this merger, if they're involved, they should be involved in that process. You know, faculty to me is, is teaching staff, and then staff is, you know, sort of everybody else, but student, I mean, I guess you could, you could certainly add a question around student voice in there, too, I don't think that's appropriate, I just, my distinction.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. But I still think now the way it's in the document, it looks like you're asking about the transition. If I was the admin and I was reading this, it would be, what does transition look like? How will faculty get into that process? And I don't know, Jeremy, were you talking more about the transition, or are you talking about getting their voice in prior to the decision?
I'm, I was actually talking about the transition.
Oh, the transition, okay.
I think that, I mean, I would be real, like, just to be frank, I think that the, the trend, the, the decision around merging or not is the board's prerogative. And like, we are just, as a committee, carrying out some questioning or some development of that plan.
Okay.
And so I think that, that's not, although it's not a foregone conclusion, because that vote hasn't happened yet. I think, you know, we are operating under the assumption that we're asking questions about that merger, and I think that you know, to get 350 people, faculty and staff's voice into the like, should we do it or not question is a lot. And maybe we should consider that, but they have time, they certainly will have opportunity to come and speak at public comment and other opportunities, and to email board, yada, yada. But I think that what's more important to me, and what I heard in the, sort of like, was the budgeting process, and then the fallout around that was less about should we do it, and let's like, can we get some teacher voice into how we should do this? And so I think, my thing is more about, like, how do, how does faculty and staff voice get into the actual transition work? So I, I mean, I always think sorry, that like, it shouldn't be in the same bullet, but like, it's sort of like a sub-bullet underneath that, you know, the transition, it's, it's not to lump it in is too much, but to make it separate is also too much for me, and I think, sort of like, for my, my opinion, like, having it as a sort of like a sub-question but separate from the, what will transition look like, is, that's how I would, that's like, sort of my, my take.
I don't know, I think it was, it's a fair criticism that we've gotten, I mean the, the feedback we've gotten from the teachers seems to largely have been through public feet, through public comment of our meetings, and I think I don't know that we can point to a, you know, place other than, you know, having some, some of their union representation sitting at the table and cheering, you know, some consolidated comments with it, but I, I, transition is one thing, but again, I think, you know, process, are there any questions, you know, again, I don't want to forever do loop here, but are there any questions, you know, student-centered questions that, you know, the teachers would have at this point? You know, I don't look at it as should we, shouldn't we, at this point, like you said, Jeremy, I think we've, you know, done an effective job of saying this is not a foregone conclusion, even though we are following sort of a preferred alternative, if you will. But I want to make sure that we are not facing the teachers only on the other side of public comment, and I don't think we've have a vehicle for that right now.
That sounds to me a little bit more like, maybe what you're talking about is community engagement, which is the second big topic for...
I mean, you know, okay, then these are just our questions, and I, I guess, you know, I guess, you know, I'm just, we're just having this conversation, I guess, but, you know, it's these are just our questions to, or our direction to the admin, right? I mean...
This list is, basically, we're looking for a report, and we want to have a list of what's gonna, what they need to answer in the report, or the details that we need. So when you're saying how do we hear from teachers before the decision gets made, which I think is kind of what you're saying, that, or that's, maybe that's only part of what you're saying, that sounds like community engagement. If it's a separate question of are we asking the questions that the teachers would like us to answer? Are those answers gonna be in this report? We have not explicitly asked the teachers, obviously, but we also haven't heard from any teachers, and we've been talking about this for almost a month now. But what, is this a good time maybe to hear comment from other attendees?
True.
Before we, so it just takes me a second to get myself set up again, okay. So I think what right now, we're just focused still on the idea of what information is gonna go in this data packet. And then the second part of the meeting will be community engagement, so I guess as I move to the attendees and ask you if you'd like to participate in our conversation kind of, right now, we're especially focused on this data packet, so I see, and you could just raise your hand and then I'll know that you would like to participate. I see Lisa, ready to go. I think you should be ready to go, Lisa.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I'll, I'll piggyback off what Tim was saying, with I think to me, it's really important that we get teachers' input, and I think if it's at all possible, which I do think it is, there's no reason to not try to do that in in gather, in this data, to get their input in, in the data that we want to be able to review before making any decisions. So I kind of always see it as like, we don't questions to ask if we're not the ones closest to the ground, and they might know questions that we just aren't thinking about, and so I'd be really curious to know if there are. And I know some teachers are following along, I know probably a lot aren't, and I think a specific kind of invitation to contribute would invite them in, in a way that we haven't done before, and I think it feels good to everybody to know that we, as board members have are considering everything that everyone wants us to consider, and for them to kind of feel like we're involving them in the process and respecting that they have some expertise and might know which questions asked that we don't know to ask. So it seems like a win-win to me, if we can pull it off, and it could just be as simple as like a survey. I know, I know I am always bringing up surveys, but it's a pretty easy way to do it.
Um, and Becky, you are, right now, I think, our only teacher online. If you are up for participating in the conversation, we're always eager to hear, but I don't want to put you on the spot either. Oh, yes, I tricked you into raising your hand, go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Um, so I think Lisa just put it really well. We, we haven't forced ourselves into the conversation, but we had probably the toughest spring we've ever had, and I think a lot of people tuned out to, of the board meetings because they just couldn't deal. There was just too much going on, and and now it's summer, and I think that, other than those of us who come and take notes, and then share them, and then people say, oh yeah, there was a meeting. I think it's not on people's radar right now. And the executive committee of the union keeps talking about how we're not invited, like when we came to that, when the three of us sat at that board meeting that time, it was because we pushed ourselves into it. We haven't been invited. And it would definitely feel good to us to be invited, to be part of the process, and I, I'll be honest, I don't entirely get like what you're generating today versus like what's late, like, I don't know where it fits in, but we, we would want to be part of both the decision and the transition. And that bothers me a little too, because that assumes that there's a transition, which we don't know yet that there is. Um, so yeah, I guess that's all I'll say. I hope that was clear, thanks.
Thank you. I guess if, if I can make a couple of comments on that, I, I would like to distinguish between teachers participating and the union participating, and that those are two pretty different entities, and, and the role of teachers in our schools is different than the role of the union in our schools, and they, they both have their place, but they're, they're not they're not wholly interchangeable. And they, they both have their place, but they're, they're not, they're not wholly interchangeable. And the other thought, Becky, you asked, how are we talking about a transition if we haven't even made a decision? Is that disingenuous? I think the implication being that, are we, have we really made a decision? And I really think we have not made a decision. But one of the things I think a lot of us heard was that if a decision is made to do this, there needs to be meaningful time for transition planning. And so we're trying to sort of start thinking about how that, how that could happen in a way that's more satisfactory to more people in the district, especially staff and faculty. So there's absolutely no predetermined outcome of this vote. I feel like we really don't know what, what we're going to see when we look at the answers to these questions. But that, that will be, everybody will be seeing it at the same time, and everybody will be looking at it in the same context and with the same set of information.
Tari, just in that vein, I'm curious if, how folks in this group feel about just changing the word will in what will transition look like and how will faculty and staff to would? And that perhaps takes a little bit of that predetermined notion off the table and, and, and makes it known that the board would like to see how that voice would get in there, or how, you know, how might, how would, whatever. But just will seems a little predetermined and would or might seems more
Okay.
flexible to be what will be the future board decision.
That sounds great. Actually, if one of you guys just changes it, I have to like go through four screens or something to change it. So you can just go ahead and do it. Yeah. Attendees, anybody else want to talk at this time about this list of questions? Okay. I guess, so let's, maybe if our committee could think a little bit about how we resolve this sort of query of like, are we asking, have, have we heard in a meaningful way from teachers? Do we need to do something else to hear from teachers in terms of coming up with this list of questions regarding this data packet? I, I struggle a little bit with just this technical logistics, you know, that the time is running out, so.
Yeah, I don't know that, at this point, we can ask for more input on the data packet questions. But I think the question that seems to really be online is, is, you know, do we direct the admin team to give us some information about how they would plan to incorporate teacher voice in the sort of community outreach process, you know, whether, whether there's, whether there is something that, you know, whether there should be an invitation to the table.
Does that question meet that need, Jonathan? How, how might faculty and staff voice get, get into the transition process or?
No, because that's a, that's about the, right, it's the, we're, we're talking about the decision process. Yeah, so there's, I think.
Yeah, I think that timeline, I shared Tari's point of view that that timeline now.
Well, but I'm talking about the community outreach really. So maybe this is going to the second piece. I'm not talking about getting the decision-making process. I'm not talking about getting things onto this list.
Yeah.
I'm talking about after we have this list and we're looking at the list and we're trying to understand the list and interpreting it and hearing from community, whether there needs to be, from the board or from the admin team, some sort of specific invitation to teacher voice to get that kind of feedback.
Yeah, got you.
Okay, so I, I just tweaked that question a little bit more, Jeremy. Maybe sort of, I liked this idea of like, asking the admin team to start thinking about including the teachers, even as they do their, their answers about transition planning. But it seems like this might be a good time, even if we haven't totally, I want to almost like circle. If, if we move to community engagement for a little while, and then we'll circle back, we'll finalize this list of questions after we finish community engagement. Does that sound good? Because it feels like we keep going back and forth. So let's maybe dig into community engagement. Does that seem?
Sounds reasonable to me.
Okay, so, um, let's, let's try to remember what we, what we talked about for community engagement previously.
Show the timeline here for a minute.
Yeah, I feel like it's pretty nonspecific.
Right. So we've got the presentation of the data packet on August 26th. Finalization of the data packet a couple of weeks after that. Then we have two weeks prior to the board discussion. And then more than two weeks till the 14th. So the, so this commu, this outreach piece was really going to be between the ninth and the 23rd, right? That's probably pretty much where we were planning on doing that.
Yeah. Um, I also found some notes from our, our first meeting a little bit, where we talked about regarding public feedback. Guiding principles, want to provide additional opportunities for hearing from public, maybe in addition to regular board meetings. Also highlight ongoing opportunities for public comment feedback already exist. Develop process for one, feedback on the decision and two, feedback on the implementation. That's that transition planning. And lastly, recommend explicit inclusion of stakeholder groups to include, one, teachers and staff, two, parents and taxpayers, three, students, and four, business community. But I don't feel like we have any real specifics about what we should actually do. Thoughts?
Well, I mean, we can certainly use the visioning work as a, I mean, as a sort of a starting point. I thought that was probably in my very short term on the board here so far, the most, I mean, certainly not, I mean, not in volume maybe, but it was certainly the most effortful from the board's perspective, which I don't know, maybe is a, is a losing battle. Because it was a ton of effort that went into that. And I think the numbers were probably higher when we had those two meetings at Crossit, one at Crossit, one at Harwood around this very decision here, the, the, you know, reconfiguration. And so maybe that topic itself would bring more people out. And so that's, that's in itself, we can use the visioning work as a starting point to then get, sort of have that work be the foundation for the numbers that we got at the, the redesign conversations. Because if we could sort of bring those two things together, that would be pretty helpful in getting a lot of voice in, in a pretty structured and structured way that we, you know, we sought out guidance to, to figure out how to do as a board.
When you say visioning work, do you mean the process or do you mean the outcomes?
I, I just mean like the actual community events that we did, where we had, you know, we had like the five different events at different schools. And, you know, it was like, it was a prescribed process by somebody who had expertise in, in that type of work. And I thought that the feedback, at least from the folks who did attend, was, was pretty positive. And, and I thought we got good information, but I thought that worked a lot better than what we did for the, the redesign work in terms of having structure and focus. And so like I said, if we can bring the numbers of the redesign work to the visioning process, some helpful info might come out of that.
At some points, I've also heard us talk about, instead of having the conversation be about should we merge or not, trying to have a conversation about, you know, what are the kinds of priorities that, that a decision should reflect? Like, you know, cost or student outcomes or class size, that kind of thing. And then also I've heard us say, even though that vision process was really cool, that's usually labor intensive. And is that, do we save that labor for the, the implementation and how to do a good implementation as opposed to what decision that should be? I'm not sure where I stand on those answers, but that, those are some things I've heard in our conversations.
Yeah, I was just going back to our notes, because that's specifically what you had said about discussions around priorities. And I, I like that. I think that's good, because you know, this whole yes, no question is, is the, is the obvious low lying fruit. So that's another piece there. I think there's going to be, I mean, I do feel like to a certain extent, we are trying to decide this, this question, like, is this the first step that we're going to take towards our previous reorganization plan? Does it still make sense, you know, given what we know now? And in the new information that we're going to be gathering, there's going, you know, there's going to be, I don't know that there's much we can do, but there's going to be a lot of discussions about, well, have you considered, you know, a third middle school? Have you considered, you know, the, there's the, sort of opening back up again? I think there, there is sort of an appetite to go back into that planning, from, from some in the public, to go back into that planning process and sort of open the whole thing up again. But I don't, for this decision that we're making specifically, I'm not sure that we, I guess I don't know that that's useful, a useful conversation to have at this stage in the process.
Yeah, I'd agree with you there, Jonathan. I think that, Tari, to your question around, you know, where do we put that effort? Knowing that the visioning process is pretty labor intensive. For me, I think, you know, we've, we've put as a committee and then as a board, put a lot of effort into this, these data packet questions. And I think that the next step, as far as effort, would be looking at, you know, what is, what are the priorities around that transition? You know, I, that's, that would be my sort of lean is saving that board effort for the, the next step, should it come to, to pass? And then relying on public input and, you know, whatever we get out of this data packet, particularly in terms of, or sorry, especially in light of the questions that we brought up tonight. That, you know, that's, that becomes the board, board decision, given, given some more public input based on the timeline that we have in front of us.
I think, you know, it's interesting, because this, the visioning process, you know, produced just tremendous amount of data. And I am a little bit wondering about how, like, let's say we had one meeting in every town, and then we put it all together and go packet. There's a lot of labor involved in that as well. But then there's also this question about how, as a board member, can you take, you know, a 40-page document and somehow coherently piece all that together into something, something useful? I mean, I do think, you, I do think it helps. I do think that whole process helps. And I think getting that, it helps when you get new ideas. But i- it's also just given our, in this information age, and we're all just drowning in, in data, to have another 40-page document to try to. I, I wonder if there is, you know, some, some, I, I guess that would lead me, as well as the amount of labor, would lead me to, to, to aim towards a, a, a smaller number of more centralized meetings where more people are attending. So, so it's not like you're trying to communicate what happened in your little meeting. You know, to avoid the fragmentation of, of, you know, 14 board members going to seven different meetings and each of them having sort of a different flavor, and then trying to communicate that to one another and.
One thing that Caitlin pointed out to me is that actually they'll probably be remote meetings, whatever we're doing. So even though schools right now are projecting will be open, the, the directive is to have as little non-student and non-staff in there as possible. So we would, and, and in some ways, you know, that means that actually it's easier for people to, I think it's easier for people to participate
Yeah.
over Zoom, for many people to participate over Zoom than it is to come in person. There are some populations where less likely to reach, but a lot of those people don't come to our, you know, in-person meetings anyways. If I think about, say, older populations or.
Yeah, that's, that's, so I do think, right, so that's a very interesting observation and it's something that I hadn't even thought of. But I, you know, we, we might need some, some feedback in terms of how to, you know, let's say you have a Zoom meeting with 100 people to get feedback. How do you do that effectively?
You can do, you can set up breakout rooms.
Yeah.
But again, it's the same idea, right? That then you've got, you know, seven rooms, let's say, even with the board members per room, getting a certain flavor. And then having to report back, you know, so it creates the same issue as having seven different meetings, I think. So I mean, it still makes it challenging. It's not the same as having all the, the members in the same room at the same time.
Maybe if you have a short enough breakout session that the, the people could be, people could, board members could watch the different rooms. I do feel like it, it could potentially be hard for people to speak up in a Zoom meeting of like 120 people.
Yeah.
Or, or just know how to like, you know, if you give, I mean, you don't want to give everybody 30 seconds, but if you give, it's kind of like, we, you know, you're, when I, when I got married, we had over 200 people there. And it was like, I was supposed to talk to everybody for five minutes, then you were talking for like 11 hours or something like that.
And you didn't actually attend your own wedding in the end.
Yeah, exhausting. And I want, I, I don't, yeah, so I don't, yeah, I, I wonder if we should, you know, look into, if this is any guidance that we could get in terms of that. Who, who is the, I can't remember the name of the consultant who helped us with our public meetings previously and, and the outreach in particular.
Sue McCormick and Matt Leininger.
Right. And I don't know whether they are experts in doing this over Zoom meetings, but we, we might see if they have any advice.
I mean, maybe part of it is thinking back and Lisa, I don't know if you had a chance, she was talking, I was chatting with her, and she was thinking she was going to try to maybe watch those meetings that we had with the trainings that we had with Matt and Lisa. I don't know if she had, with Matt and Sue, I'm not sure if she had a chance to watch those. But they had alternate strategies besides just meeting in person. Like, remember there were also ideas of like surveys? We recently got a constituent letter that said, what about like, you know, we could set up, you know, something in the grocery store? Because I do think one of the challenges is that we often don't hear much from Waterbury, Duxbury, for example. So we hear a lot from the other four towns, but not from those two. So, you know, we, we know certain things that work to get people there, but we still are missing a lot of people. You know, maybe, do we need to be thinking of things kind of outside the meeting box? But of course, I think one of the challenges is, we almost need to have an outline by the time we finish tonight, even if it's not final. Because if we're, if we start with this planning in, you know, August 28th, we're just not going to be able to get anything done.
What do we plan to use for a vehicle to present this? I guess, you know, I've been thinking a little bit about it too, in terms of, you know, treating it like, like a public process, right? So we're, we're putting this list of questions together to basically give everyone assurance that we've done all the due diligence, you know, necessary to task the administration to bring information back. So, you know, treating it like, let's say, an environmental impact statement, right? So the board has a project. The project is a proposal to merge seventh and eighth grade. And, you know, within that is, you know, that's the preferred alternative. There's also the no action alternative. And maybe a couple of variations therein. So the community engagement piece, you know, to keep it, you know, focused, you know, we can't, you know, how do we go into this without sort of, you know, striking the tone that we need to explore a multitude of other things than, other than what we're sharing and presenting, right? So to Jeremy's point, you know, before, and, you know, the purview of the board ultimately is to take an action here, gather information, make sure that we can tell the public unequivocally that we've done all of our due diligence. And so we don't need to, you know, go back into some sort of visioning process, right? I mean, I, I can't even imagine going into a visioning process in this fashion, after doing all this work, with, you know, sort of, you know, the, the tailwind of, of moving something forward that the board voted on once many months ago, but not being able to take this information and, and come out to the community and find some way to scope them, right? So, you know, before this is, you know, before we're in front of them, how do we scope the community or the teachers? Maybe when we rely on surveys and so forth. So in that public process, a, a proponent has a project. And part of the due diligence is not only gathering the information you believe you need to know, but you got to scope everybody else, all, all the other stakeholders. And so I don't want to get ourselves in a position that we have, you know, get in front of the public as if we're searching for answers or suggestions on, you know, how this should go, I guess. So I'd just like to talk a little bit about, you know, what, what we're going to present in this data pack. Because I don't, I don't think sitting up, up at the board table like we did at those other, you know, community engagement events, and, you know, basically sharing a, a report with the public, it just doesn't feel like the information was coming from us, to be honest with you. So I want to make sure that we do an. So I want to make sure that we do an effective job of dispelling as much, you know, doubt and criticism going into this that, you know, we've asked all the right questions, we've asked all the right people, you know, to assist us and we're coming out to the community with a very well-formed pitch, for lack of a better term. You know, and then we can, you know, debate the merits of the individual, you know, things, but I don't know, I, I don't know what anybody else thinks about that, if, if that, if it feels like, you know, this would be a revisitation of any idea that people have on what we should be doing, you know, let's, let's, you know, have it out in these community engagement sessions. Or is it more of a pressure test for what we believe to be the best outcome for the community?
I guess I see it as it, it's just the next step, you know, if, if in November we said we're going to continue to explore these three options, this is how you explore that option. You, you dig into it more. And so this is digging into one of those three options and it's, it is adding a lot of questions that we didn't have answered when we started talking about making a policy decision on it this fall. Some of them got answered as we went along, but some of them didn't. And then, you know, the world has kind of changed in the last six months. So I, I don't think that it, there's any reason that having this conversation and digging it and creating this new data package indicates that we should start over again. But I certainly don't want to give people that impression that that's what this is. I, I also think there's a good reason why this is the, the question that we're, or this is why this is the middle school option that we're looking at. But, you know, that, that that three-stage plan, you know, that's, or not three stages, that three-element plan was the big picture plan, but the, the committee or the, the group wasn't ready to make final decisions on any of it. So this is, this is how you make a final decision.
But I guess that's my point, then I just, it's really just kind of an approach thing that if we go to the community, you know, I just, I don't.
Is it like, like Maureen, maybe it was the meeting, the last meeting, but Maureen made a point more, and sort of like public part of our committee meeting that just be clear about what you're looking for from community, like, are you asking for input on like what, what the configuration should be? Or are you asking for input on what the transition should look like, right? Like sort of being very clear with our the, the goal of that community engagement, right? Is that sort of like what you're saying too, is like, we're, like, we need to decide, like, are we opening up this discussion? I don't think that's where we're at, but like, you know, are we, or are we saying, here is the information, this is, this is our pitch as to why we think this is the best configuration. How can we work with you to, to make your priorities heard in this transition, right? So like, they're, they're like, being very upfront and very clear with like what we're looking for out of public engagement is, is more important, I think, than anything else we can do, right? Because we, giving people false hope or an illusion that, and not to say that we're, we're taking this off the table, but that they have input in a place where they don't actually have input. Sort of like we're, I feel like we've gotten ourselves into trouble in the past, right? It's like being unclear about what we're actually asking for. I think, I think that's your point, right, Tim, is that like you just want to be clear about what we're asking for when it comes to community engagement at these events.
Right, because we're representing the position, you know, or we're representing, you know, a, a range of options based on all of this due diligence above. So everything that we're looking for is legit, I'm not, so I just want to be, you know, make clear, sorry, that, you know, I'm not saying we're starting over. This is a culmination of, you know, years, right? And so, and so, yeah, no, I think that's a good way to wrap it up, Jeremy, is, you know, when we go in front of the public, we have a very well articulated, you know, look at things and people can be assured that we've done a lot of diligence and there have been a lot of voices and at this point in the process, you know, this is what, this is what we need.
Committee, does this seem like a good time to get a little feedback from our other audience members or a natural break maybe in our discussion of this?
Sure.
All right. Laura, you've had your hand up for a while, you want to go ahead?
Hi, you can hear me?
Yeah.
Hey, can you see my bunny picture?
We do see your bunny.
Very cute.
That's cute. I think my daughter did that, anyway, sorry. So I'm trying to think, trying to gather my thoughts a little bit. So I appreciate the back and forth about the kind of feedback you're looking for. I guess I can only speak for myself and say that I, I feel like there is still some resentment there around not being asked in the first place if a middle school merger was something the community even wanted. I feel like this has come, you know, top down. And whether you support it or not, you know, at the board table, is this something that your constituents are saying they want? And I, I guess I'm not convinced that we are. But I do think you need to be particularly clear when you're asking for feedback, what it, what it's on, just like you're saying. Because if it's not about whether to merge, people need to know that. If you guys are already, that's done, that train has left the station and you just want to know about, okay, how do we implement it? That looks a lot different. And personally, it just going back to the teacher stuff, you know, for me, teachers giving feedback and the union sitting at the table, those are two different things. I, I don't think Becky was trying to present that the union is taking a position. I think the union, that's how they disseminate their information. Teachers want to have a say, not from the union, if that's, if that makes sense. Yeah, I guess that's it. So there you go. Thanks.
Christine, I saw you next, let me get you ready to talk. Sorry. Okay, Christine, you should be ready to go.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are unmuted.
Thank you. So a couple of things, like I do think the community engagement is important, but part of what's in play and I, and I kind of feel, I, I sense some of this in the conversations that's ongoing, like we, as a board, the board needs to make sure that it has the information that it needs to make the decision. And however, you know, the board moves forward, then we also have to be able to make sure, we need to be able to make sure we have enough information that we can sell it to the public and get their support. But, you know, I was going back and I looked at, I was looking at some old Act 46 documents. And, you know, there's a lot of talk of equity, so the kind of doing nothing at all, I think we need to be careful of because there's, there's a lack of programmatic opportunities between the two schools and those need to be evened out somehow. So I, I encourage people, you know, to not think of it, we're staying status quo because we're still not meeting the goals of the merger, which were equity, and that is what we sold people on. And if you go back through those documents, there's probably, there's so many times when we talk about merging the middle schools. So I, I feel, while I know that, you know, not everyone in the public gets on the page at the same time, that information was there and that idea was kind of sold and a lot of people voted in support. So I think that's, you know, one thing to keep in mind and and, and just how we're going to fix it efficiencies otherwise. But I think, I mean, I do agree with, you know, what Jonathan was saying about getting more of those visioning type conversations going, like more of that small group. If there's a way to have those happen, I think they're more effective. But I think also we need to remember that the, one of the reasons that we did that work was to, to train board members. So like, I, I didn't feel super comfortable leading those discussion groups, but I know we have a lot of, probably half our board that is pretty skilled at it. And we also have some members of the public that might be able to help us with that as well. Because I know there were certain people that came in as, I don't know what we called them, Jonathan, but they were able to lead, lead some of those groups as well for us and help with those small groups, group discussions. So, you know, maybe for some of that, we can use them as an expert or to help train some of us board members that aren't quite on, you know, as, as skilled in doing that work.
Yeah, maybe facilitators, but yeah.
Yes.
That was, I, I agree that, that was, that was nice and I think it helps to avoid there being sort of a dichotomy between the whoever's leading the small group and whoever is giving feedback. If it's community-led and community feedback, then sometimes that, yeah, it, it put people at ease to, to discuss things. But yes, I, there was some training involved as well. And the one thing that's interesting though is that I, I wonder how the, with those small groups, I mean, again, I guess they could be done in breakout rooms and that could be very intimate, but there was certain intimacy about being around the table that may be difficult to catch in a, in a online meeting.
Yeah, that does occur to me that one of the nice things about like if we had breakout rooms and say, I, I could picture that maybe there was a presentation that was made either pre-recorded or there, and then everybody went to breakout rooms and say they were 45 minutes or an hour. It would be easier to watch seven 45-minute breakout rooms at my leisure, you know, at midnight or whatever, than it would be to schedule, you know, a meeting on Waitsfield on Tuesday at 7:00 PM and Moretown on Thursday at 8:00 PM, you know, or whatever. So that, in a way, it might be almost easier to, to think about actually managing something with, with that idea of breakout rooms or small conversations than it normally would if it was all in person.
Yeah, I wonder about having people register and then, you know, rather than breakout rooms, just having like unique meetings where, where people register.
Yeah.
You know, because then you could get the right number of people.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. Let's hear Lisa, we got a couple more comments, I think, you're ready to go.
Yeah, thanks for inviting me in. Yeah, I feel like this is such a big, I have like, I feel like I have a lot to say, but I don't really know how to articulate it well. So what I've written down in listening to you guys discuss this is just, that I think it's really important that we reach out, that, reach out to the stakeholders that we want to hear from that could sway our decision. And so for me, that would be teachers, administrators and specifically the building principals, I would like to invite in and hear from individually about how they're feeling about it, especially the middle school principals. And students would be amazing to hear from, I don't know how feasible that is. But anyone who could actually sway our decision, I think we really need to invite in to the discussion and hear from before we do the community engagement. And then how I view the community engagement is a little bit more, I like this idea of trying to read the community's priorities. So if we are able to gather information for the community about their priorities, we can double check that the plan that we're, you know, going for in our, in our next big decision aligns with the broad community values. And if it doesn't, that might make us rethink where we were planning on going. And if it does, that gives us, you know, it helps us, it helps inform our decision and feel like we're going on the right path. What I also predict as being a big priority for the community and for all of us is student outcomes. And I feel like we haven't really defined how we're going to try to predict that or even gather data around the different scenarios and how they would affect student outcomes. So if, if that didn't make it on our list as far as what information we're trying to gather, I think that's a really big one that we need to try to dig into a little bit.
Thank you. Anything else right now? Not yet. Okay, well, let us know if you have more to say later. Michael, go ahead. I think you're ready. Oh no, I did it wrong, sorry. Okay, Michael, I think you're ready.
There we go, I'm like, I don't see, I'm mute. Have a bit on this side of the table.
Yeah. Sorry, I think you're ready now, try it again, Michael, thank you for your patience. Yeah, sorry.
All right. I really like the idea of sort of that focus group thing. I found that good as a community member, and I think focus groups specifically with teachers, the different breakout, small groups, probably makes it up. Be interested, I don't know how to specifically break it up, those which would affect directly and those not. But I think that is very important, really, when to hear where the concerns are, what thoughts are, things said there. I would be a little concerned, or I think I would love the principal's view, but that's probably jumping outside the hierarchy, so I can see different problems with that there. And I think we saw that a little bit in the fall or last year with the different meetings and how, how things were said from one meeting to another from the administrators. But yeah, and I think before the public, I don't like that, I really want to, I believe the teachers were the huge part of what happened at town meeting. And so engagement there is very important to me, so we can understand what what the actual effects are. From a union standpoint, I personally believe the union will always be, as a union against, because normally unions are usually against anything that might result in job cuts, because that's a problem too. Here's the two things, is the bringing it together for stuff that unfortunately also leads to job cuts, which unfortunately is where savings come from, you know, so that's it.
Thank you. You know, as I'm listening to everyone, and actually I feel like it was Laura who helped me maybe try to start thinking about it this way. Laura, when you said, I'm going to paraphrase, obviously it's not exactly what you said, but in a way you, you kind of were saying, nobody asked me if I wanted to merge the middle school, I don't want to merge the middle school. And I, I think that actually gets at a lot of, it helped me see the frustration in a slightly different way. And it reminds me that when we started this process, it wasn't like somebody was like, I have a fun idea, let's merge the middle school, that's what this should all be about. It was more like we started this process by looking at, these are the challenges that we're facing as a district that, that we know about. And do you remember, we even made this like list of challenges and opportunities and we approved it and stuff. And I feel like that, maybe that's a way to start this priorities conversation, you know? The merger is, it's a means to solve these challenges that the board has identified. And I do think that is one of the things is that I think for many community members, it sort of feels like, why are we talking about this? You know, there's, what's the problem, you know, and, and they're not clear what, what the board is worried about. So is that a way to get at this idea of like, when we talk about what are our priorities? Could that help the board? And I feel like if we're going to do priorities, we almost have to have the board create a list of what are the sort of themes that we would be using to share these, I like this, this focus group conversation or these breakout groups. Could that be a route forward that we're kind of like, you know, many people on the board talk about, you know, Christine mentioned a challenge of equity. We've heard student outcomes as a, as a, as a challenge. Many people on the board have been looking at increased costs bumping up against the the funding, the ex, I'm sorry, I'm losing it, but you know, the, the funding ceiling that we, before we start getting, yes, thank you, the spending threshold. We've been looking at the challenge of reduced enrollment and how that's affecting our cost per pupil, things like that. So we have these, and we, oh, we knew that there was the challenge of our reducing tax incentive. We also knew that we have this challenge of having buildings, hardwood in particular, that needs an enormous, or the, the cost of repairing it is enormous. So I think to some degree, all this talk of making changes in the district makes a lot more sense when you, even if you don't agree with the decision or the plan, but you understand why we'd even be talking about it when you, when you see that we started from a position of looking at these challenges instead of just like, how can we mess with everyone's lives? Which is what I think it kind of feels like to some people.
So I, I guess I'm not, I, I'm a little confused about what you're. I guess I'm not, I'm a little confused about what you're saying. How we, how we, how we organize.
Then I could picture that instead of talking about, like, here's the plan for the merger and here's, and actually, if we were going to do it this way, we could even start it before we finish the data packet, it would give us a little more time. Instead of saying, here's what the plan is merging seventh and eighth grade, we could say, these are the problems or these are the challenges we've been looking at as a, we've been concerned about. And so we've done all this work to try to think about how we could, you know, tinker with our resources to address some of these challenges more effectively. And also we think that these are some opportunities that might present themselves. And then we could invite people to sort of not so much weigh in on the merger, which is the yes, no decision, but the like, how do, how do we prioritize? You know, is cost the most important thing? Is our student outcomes the most important thing? Do you see that there are trade offs? Because sometimes that's the other thing that I think gets lost in this is that there's, there are going to be trade offs for everything. And so but we're, we're not really asking usually community members to reflect on if they had to trade off between two things, where would they, where would they make that trade off, that kind of thing? We get so lost that we tend to have people get caught up in the plan, but what we really need to hear is what are their values and what are their priorities so that we can then say, does this plan meet those values and priorities?
It sounds a little bit like going back to the visioning, honestly. I mean, what you're suggesting, because I think we
Without recreating it.
But I mean, I do think we did talk a lot about, you know, the values and what, what I don't know if we talked specifically about trading them off, but I guess I do feel like we need to, I definitely personally want some community voice over this, over the specifics of the plan. Maybe more than I want to hear about the, the values personally, just because I, I feel like we, we really heard a lot about that. And again, you know, we, we can go back to that visioning document and, and look through that now. So I don't know, I guess I'm exactly sure how.
But could we use the vision statement as a starting point then to have? Like, if we take this vision statement and we look at the challenges that the district is facing, how do, how do we prioritize? Because I mean, if we're just digging into the plan, then what priorities are we looking at?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, because the other issue sometimes that I have with the, with the challenges thing is that I mean, it kind of, none of us can read the future, right? And so some of that comes into some gloom and doom prophesizing, which as a community member, I was definitely frustrated with. I mean, not that I didn't think that there was problems there, but I thought sometimes they were maybe being overstated in terms of, you know, what their impact would be. And so to get back into that, like, okay, here are the problems we're facing, you know, how, I also worry that that really opens the door to like a lot of brainstorming, like, oh, well, we just need to, I don't know. I, it's, you know, I mean, I'm not, I don't want to be, I, I guess I'm worried that it wouldn't give the kind of feedback that I would really be looking for prior to make a decision.
What kind of feedback would each of you like to get prior to making your decision? What would be ideal for each of you? Doesn't have to agree.
For, right? I mean, it's not challenges, it's opportunities. So you just, yeah, it's important to come back in front of the public with some confidence that we have met a challenge, you know, through this opportunity. I don't know. I mean, it's, yeah, I just really want to be cautious about, you know, getting into like Jonathan says, this big brainstorming event as if we're asking truly, you know, you know, yes, no, do you like this? Do you not like this? You know, so if we're thinking again, as an opportunity that we're meeting, right? You know, we already know what the challenges are. I don't think that's lost on anybody.
But at the end, whatever we do, what would you like to hear? Okay, sorry.
No, I was just, I've been thinking very similarly to you recently, Tari, in that I think sometimes, you know, folks who don't make the decisions at the board level can get really focused on one thing, right? And the board has to make decisions on a real wide multitude of data points, right? I don't know, for lack of a better word, that affected district. These ripple effects to every singular decision, right? Is what I'm trying to say. And so I think your, what your question or idea or statement is really about is presenting the information that we already have in a way that takes all of those, just all the spokes of that wheel into consideration and sort of like puts them all out there in one way so that all of those pieces can be compared and contrasted and like the importance, the value, like whether we ask for that information or not is, is less important to me, I think, than that we get that information out in a way that is absorbed in like one easy to look at and digest, you know, piece of presentation. I think a lot of times when we put out there, I think Tim, this is like to your point earlier around like when we sat at that, like, you know, the, the singular table, horizontal table, that presentation behind us and just sort of like put out information that reflected a lot of information, like, you know, 40 page packets of data information, right? That is a lot to digest if you're a member of the board, let alone a member of the, the public, right? And so I think that, you know, this idea I had just now, hearing you talk, Tari, was about like those, those types of like graphic organizers or like the old like story webs that we, like, I don't know, I used to use in school to create. It's like the, the middle is the main idea, right? And then like your, your sort of like main topics come off that. And then off that you have like, you know, the individual sentences or something like that. And so I think that if using your idea of like, you know, this middle school merger, and then maybe the first spoke is like the challenges that the board considered. And then the next spokes off that are the solutions or the, the sort of like cost benefit of different makeups or different scenarios or different iterations of the scenario, right? And so that like, we get from that point of like all of the, the questions or the the considerations that were out there are right in front of us, right off that main idea, but also attached to that are some ideas that the board and the community have, have put out there as, you know, solutions to those, those problems. I think that's, it's all, it's important to have all that in one place, but if you're looking at a 40 page document, you look at one page at a time, right? This isn't something that we can look at the whole picture all at once. I, you know, that's, that's my, I do agree with your, your point, Tari. I, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, I, I think, I think that's a good question, Tari. And thanks for, I, I hear what you're saying, Jeremy. I think that's a, I like the way you're visualizing that graphically. It helps pull it all together. But yeah, you know, in terms of like what, what I would be, what I personally would want to get would be the person's thinking, not just a yes, no, but the person's like, the person's thinking, how, you know, what are their, what is their tipping point that leads them into, you know, being in favor or, or against that. And I mean, and some of that comes into, you know, because I think some of that, when I, when I'm looking at the, at the, when I'm making this decision, I'm going to be looking at sort of generally the community support or the lack of support for it. That is a piece, you know, that's an important piece. It's not the only piece. But another piece is why, where is the community, you know, or is this, is the top priority, you know, minimizing the bus commute? Okay. Does that have more or less validity than the, you know, or someone else who's like, oh, my top priority is a larger class size for social reasons, or someone else might say, you know, my top priority is a smaller class size for learning reasons, or another person might say, bringing everybody together. So getting those priorities from the visioning as they specifically relate to this decision, I think is what, what I, what I would want, what I would be trying to integrate, which is not an easy integration, because it's, you know, this is a lot of information. But I do feel like, you know, even if, 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 if it was like 80 to 20% people who were opposed to it, but then I looked at what their, what their primary priorities were, and I thought that is a bummer that say, whatever the issue might be. But to me, in terms of the overall values, in terms of like what is going to do the most good for the district, that whatever that my, that smaller complaint is, you know, is less valid to me or is less important than some of the benefits that come out of it, or maybe the other goes the other way around. But I think that's, you know, I, as opposed to just getting too broad, I do feel like, and this may have been what you were suggesting, and I, and I apologize for being negative if it was, but just making sure that when we go through those values, that it is specifically related to this, this yes, no decision. So we're not just asking for a yes, no, but we're asking for the values behind it. That's, I guess to me, that's what, what I think I would get the most out of and would help me in the decision-making process.
I love that idea. I think you said it beautifully. Now, how, like, how could we get that to happen? Like, what would be the structure for that kind of conversation?
Yeah, I mean, I wonder if, yeah, I wonder if we could go back to the, the vision statement somehow and, and ask people to consider how, you know, where their position on this, how that relates to the, to the, to the.
Yeah, could it be like for each element of the vision statement? Could we look at under the, under current status, this is how that would, how would it compare a current status versus merger for each element? And then what do you feel about that or something? You know, when we look at
I think that would be interesting. And, and I, I think also the other thing that'd be good about that was it would help people think about it as well. I mean, I would, I hope that people would come to these meetings and maybe come out of it, if they're on the fence, they, they maybe make their decision one way or the other, but based on, on some real thought about the values that are underlying and, and or whatever, you know, concerns or how relevant they are compared to some of the other things that other people at these meetings raise. So I, I mean, yeah, I think that, that could, that's a good idea, Tari. I think that might, that might be a really unique and useful way to to think, to try. Something to propose anyway, or, or think about.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm fully behind this, this sort of this thought process right now.
Tim, what do you think?
Well, we, the vision, you know, I mean, we haven't, you know, we have a vision statement, right? We haven't really done much with it. So we really can't quantify it today. So I mean, I think that's part of this exercise is, you know, wedding the, the vision statement that we did devote a tremendous amount of time to. And so again, as long as we're not, you know, too lofty in, in value propositions and you know, vision process and we are bringing underlying, you know, information to the folks that, you know, we, you know, I'm just trying to make sure that we, we can have, you know, we can measure this at the end. So if we're taking folks' feedback, you know, how do we distill it, you know?
Yeah, Tim, I wonder if like some sort of like hybrid of these ideas is to, to take sort of like the information that we get in the data packet and then like we just, we sort of label the vet, like the part of the vision that it, that it would apply to. And if we can't figure out how this piece of data applies to the vision statement, then why are we using it, right? So it becomes like a sort of like a more of a process, right? For like including I, data that we want to present to the community. So I do, I do think that we get that sometimes in feedback that, you know, we get our own vision statement sort of thrown back at us and then say like, how does this relate to this statement? Or I don't, you know, like, you need to explain to me how this relates to the vision that, that, you know, you worked so hard to, to create. And that was a, a lot of engagement and a lot of labor from a lot of people. So I think maybe we go through that, that exercise of sort of when we get the data back, how does it relate? Can we label as a board how it relates to our vision?
Yeah. So it's just metrics, right? You know, at the end of the day, we're presenting metrics. You know, we have a vision statement. How can we, you know, as a board rate or rank the information once we get it?
And I don't even know if it's like about ranking or rating it. I think it's just like, does it meet the vision or not, right? Like those are, and then people can decide like, hey, is that how I, how they rank it, I guess, because they vote.
Well, if we're going to use the information to make a decision, right? We've talked about whether or not, you know, you know, public would have, you know, if we heard something that would sway us. I don't know. I'm just trying to, you know, figure out.
I think I understand what you're saying.
On the same sheet of music, right? This is, you know, sort of, you know, criteria, you know, priorities. I think we're on the right track for sure here.
Yeah.
In terms of just, you know, channeling, channeling what we want to know and how we're going to use it.
Yeah. And I did not intend to suggest that we should recreate the vision statement by any stretch. Jonathan said it much more thoughtfully or articulated than I did. So I'm glad that you were able to do that. But I love this idea of just starting with this work that we did. And it allows us a chance to really dig into and use this work and practice applying it to a policy decision. I mean, that's, that's really exciting.
I agree.
I see.
Yeah. And it takes our efforts that we did to really try to like get the values of the community and, and codify those and then, and then come back. And you know, it is interesting because I think you, you know, you're going to be getting some potential pros and cons and with, you know, on, on each of these, on each of these things. And there's different interpretations in terms of what they mean. But I do feel like, yeah, that would, that's, it's a, it's a cool idea.
I, I feel like I like it too, because it, it asks the community, anybody participating in the conversation to engage in thinking about it the way the board members kind of have to, that there might not be any one perfect solution, but there might be some things that are better and some things are worse. And you know, there's this constant weighing that people have to do when you, you ultimately have a yes or no decision. And
Right.
It's, but it's often the process of making that is quite nuanced. That's pretty fun to think about. Laura, I see your hands back up. If you're ready to talk, we could hear from you again.
Thanks, Terry. No, I just wanted to say that I do, I do appreciate, you know, the challenges of our district. I don't think that's ever been an argument. At least for me. And that the board was compelled to come up with plans around how to address that. And I get that. It's not just a matter of, I don't want to merge the middle schools. I think it was, you know, as people are talking about trade offs and we hear what CrossFit Brook is going to look like and be like, and compared to what my child is getting at Harwood Middle, that's a huge trade off and not a good one. So and especially now with, you know, before it was, well, we're going to offset the cost of the bond. Well, there's no bond. So how much are we really saving? And what is the community, what's more important? And maybe this goes to your values question, you know, is $20 off your taxes? And I am not saying that isn't a lot of money. I just, for me personally, is $20 off my taxes worth 25 kids in a class and kids crammed in the cafeteria and the gym? Well, no, it's not. And so I just, I think that needs to be really looked at and, and I'm hoping that the board is going to be really thoughtful about that kind of thing. Especially now that the bond is off the table and we're looking at maybe no construction at CrossFit Brook. Maybe ever. So that's just, that's really important to me. Challenges or no. And I think we are in a different climate. I, I don't know, I could be speaking out of nothing, but I thought I had heard that 11 new families have registered in Warren. So I, I just think we're looking at a different world and we don't know what that's going to bring. I, I want to think positively as much as I can. So thanks.
Thank you. And Laura, let me apologize to you personally in case it seemed like I was putting thoughts or you know, not having information or thoughtfulness in here. I truly apologize. Your words were like a seed for me and I appreciated it. And if, if I accidentally overstepped in the way that I expressed that, I do truly apologize to you.
I don't know if you can hear me, but I
Yeah. Okay. Because I realized I did use your name because you were my inspiration, but I didn't want to, anyway. So thank you for accepting that. And actually, you know, your point of like, is 20, is that going to be worth it for $20? This is kind of the point of that data package is to actually put that all together. So we can all look at the numbers and see what do we get and what do we save or what does it cost? And and we can have those conversations all together instead of, you know, we've looked at different iterations over time and it's exciting to think about, you know, putting it all in the same place at the same time. Lisa, why don't you go ahead?
Yeah, as you guys are talking about how the community engagement events could look, it makes me wonder if, when that kind of comes into focus, if, if there's a way to to turn what is going to happen at the event also into a survey so that it could be, there could be multiple ways that people could participate and offer their information, offer their opinions, but also, you know, engage in the process of thinking about it. And so it seems like there might be a, a way to kind of take the structure that we're going to use at the event and turn it into a little bit of a more of a narrative on paper that, that people could engage with and, and and submit digitally to reach a broader community that we might not be gathered. to reach a broader community that we might not be gathering at an event. I mean, I know it'll be a digital event as well, but, um, I think if we can get it out in something that people can do in their own time whenever they want to, we might get even more responses back and more people thinking about it in this kind of way of, of, you know, putting it against our vision statement. I think that'd be really beneficial.
Thank you. Sorry, I just. Christine, why don't you go ahead too?
Yeah, just to kind of reiterate to what Lisa was saying. I, my question is, you know, these events are great, the surveys are great. How do we capture the people that we don't normally hear from? Because I feel like last year when we went through all this community engagement, there were a lot of people that probably came to both the Harwood event and the CrossFit event and then filled out the survey. So, you know, it, it's almost like this false positive. It looks like all these people participated, but there's a bunch of people that participated in triplicate and then a bunch of people that just didn't participate. So like the people that are in triplicate, you know, their, their voice really shouldn't be outsized to all the other people. So how do we draw in those people that aren't coming to the events or aren't filling out those normal surveys that we get? And I'm, I'd have, I mean, I'd have to put some thought into it, but I think that's an important thing to do as well is to make sure that we're hearing from the people that we don't normally hear from.
That reminds me of that, Christine, thank you, of that concept of thin engagement versus thick engagement too. So, you know, if we, is there some kind of thin engagement that we could use that might tie into some of these themes, but doesn't require an hour and a half of time to participate?
Right, which would be, which would lead into this concept of a survey or an online tool. But, but of course, I think the same people that don't participate in the meetings probably don't participate in the on, in the use of surveys and online tools as much either. So it is something to, to, to think about if there's a way to draw them into the process.
Yeah, I mean, we definitely don't see as much, but you know, we do sometimes see, I think we had a survey sometimes fall where we had 800 people respond to, you know, a, a short survey, some of whom wrote multiple paragraphs. So as opposed to, I think it was about 200 or so who came to the two events that we had, one at Harwood and one at CrossFit. So, you know, it could be, and, and maybe we could even do a little bit of that kind of getting out there and, you know, going to the grocery store, hitting some places where it's not just, I, I mean, I think it's so much easier for us to hear from parents and, and from teachers. We did hear from a lot of teachers this fall, but it, and I want to continue to hear from both those groups. But I also think it's, you know, we, we don't hear from outside those groups a whole lot. I don't know what the answer is there. Christine, are you having your hand up again? Sorry, or did it just, is it still leftover from before?
The leftover, sorry.
No, okay. All right. Well, so it's, it's 8:35. It feels like we, it feels like pretty good excitement about this possibility of trying to use the vision statement to create almost like a rubric or something to evaluate what we end up seeing in the data package and whether it turns out that that merger is going to do what the district needs it to do, to be worth it. Is that, am I reading the, the room correctly?
Yeah, from my perspective, yeah.
Okay. So what we sort of have outlined is, is one fairly time-consuming type of community engagement event, you know, it'd be, it's probably at least an hour per person to participate. Although it'd probably be, it could, it could potentially be done remotely or some combination of remote and in-person, but not in the schools. Do we need to try to think of some, some easier or lower commitment ways to participate?
I mean, is, I think as much as possible, if we could have, if we have a specific set of questions that we're going to be asking, you know, if we, if we develop our questions about, around this, you know, tell us whether you're pro or con this merger and, and, and take into account the, you know, how that, however, we, we set that up, whether we go like one value at a time from the vision statement or whether we, but whatever question that we ask the, at those, at that engagement meeting, I think if we could somehow do that through a thin engagement, through a broadcast, through some sort of online survey, I don't see why not to, why not do that? And then, and to a certain extent, you know, we, we can, we can treat the feedback that we get through that online survey sort of on par with anything that anybody says when they're talking. Especially if we're asking them the same question, it also reduces the amount of labor in terms of trying to develop two different tools.
Okay, so I think you're saying we'd have the, the, the live conversations and then we'd have also an asynchronous event which provided access to the same information about the plan and then essentially ask them to fill out a form to share their responses instead of participating in a, in a synchronous dialogue about it?
I think so. I mean, I, I think it would just help people who couldn't make it to that other event for whatever reason, whether it's because of the length of time or because of the timing of the event, whenever that, however that works out. Or just some people probably prefer to write than speak in public. And so it's not perfect because it doesn't catch someone who isn't going to go to the meeting and, you know, is having trouble with online or, or isn't really. But, but I think it, as you, as you've pointed out, the online survey that we did before, we had, we had a lot of feedback from that. And I think, so I, so I don't see, as, as much as possible, it may not be that we want to go exactly one-to-one and have exactly the same questions asked the two events because it may be something, you know, some, some nuance in a, in an in-person meeting that we want to ask the question slightly different, but as parallel as possible, I would think.
And is there value in trying to create like a sort of light survey too? Like, you know, like a diet survey of, but doesn't maybe try to dig in as much, but maybe we would see 1,000 people participate instead of our, our more typical 200 or 300?
Closer to like, what, what would the light survey look like? Would that be closer to just a yes, no? Do you like me? Yes, no?
That reminds me of passing notes in seventh grade. Um, yeah. I don't, I don't know, because I feel like I don't want to, I, I always worry that when we, when we reduce it down to that, it's so different than the way the decisions get made.
Yeah, so something intermediate between, well, yeah, and I guess it depends on how complicated the questions are that we're asking in the community. Because if they're relatively simple, then we could have a relatively thin, you know, I don't think we want to give anybody like an eight-page, you know, survey, but I also don't think we want to be asking those kind of eight-page questions in the, in the outreach group either. So I think as, as much as possible, if we can keep both of them concise as possible, I think that would be useful.
Well, so maybe that is the thing then. Does it actually make sense to have it be like the live is the thick engagement? And then the survey is a thin engagement and it isn't as, it isn't aspiring to cover as much ground as the live event.
Yeah, and I mean, the question could be the same, but the reason, part of the reason it's not going to catch as much ground is there's not going to be any capability for a dialogue. There's not going to be anybody changing your mind or talking to you or, or, you know, you're not going to be able to hear, you're not going to be hearing other people express what their concerns are and then think, oh, I didn't think of that, you know? So, so it'll be thin by its nature, but is, but it may be, it may be able to be parallel. And that would also just help us in terms of having one data set to look at as opposed to two different, trying to figure out, okay, well, these two different things gives us two different sort of viewpoints and how do we weigh all of that?
Yeah, I mean, I wonder if you could, if we could almost just do something like, on this day, how would you prioritize these elements of the vision statement? Like, what's most important to you? Is it equity? Is it opportunity? Is it programming? Community participation? And it, you know, and it's something that simple.
Well, but I, but I would, you know, again, what my question would be on this day, what is your, what are your top priorities and how does that affect your thinking about this?
Oh, nice. Okay. I'm just going to write, write that down because I, we're not going to remember in August.
But everyone gets asked the same baseline information. The intermediate survey is just a subset of not going to the event where more dialogue could happen. We're going to ask those folks the same question.
I would hope so. I would think that would just be, yeah, that'd be the most straightforward.
Yeah, and also that then if people are doing both, we're really looking at two. I mean, I, I want them to echo each other, but I, I don't want it to sort of, I don't want it to feel like, well, we had 200 people who did that, we had 800 people who did this, but two, 100 did the same. So it's skewing the results. Like, I want that, I want us to see them as sort of slightly different, but related data sets almost so that, because that, sometimes that's the challenge. It's like, yes, we had 200 bodies at these events, but 40 of them came to both, you know, or whatever it is.
Sure.
So, okay, so we, you just said on this day, what are your highest priorities from our vision statement? And then how, and how do you?
How does that affect your thinking about the proposed? Yeah, there you go.
Okay. And, but we'd ultimately, we'd like that to be a yes, no, right? Not, not really an open-ended. Or do we want that to be open-ended and we just read those?
I, I, yeah, I mean, I, I think we could make it, I, I, we said in the last other meeting, we said, oh, well, you know, we, we don't necessarily have to ask yes, no. We know we're going to get yes, no's anyway. But we, so we could, but I, but I think, you know, it'd be more interesting to, yeah, I guess we could ask, how does that affect your position? You know, or, yeah. I think the yes, no is going to come out of that question, but.
So we don't try to boil it down to yes, no. We just leave it open-ended and then we'll, we assume that we will get a yes, no out of it.
I don't know. What do, what do you think, Tim and Jeremy?
It seems like it'd be easy enough to say, at this point, are you a yes or a no? And a box and then, and then that open-ended question too, so that at least if it's an easy form.
Yeah.
We don't have to get the yes, no out of the narrative, but then we get a ton more information out of the, the narrative portion as well.
Yeah. And I guess the, the only, you know, concern that I had about the straight-up yes, no is that, you know, it's, and I, I think it's fine, but you know, it's going to be, that's going to be distilled down into a percentage and then it's going, you know,
We add.
Which I think is important. I think that's an important percentage, but I think a lot of people will be like, well, how, how could you not just straight-up vote with the percentage, you know, like it takes a little bit of the.
Oh, because the percentage would only be a percentage of the electorate. So I mean, you're making it hard to there, but I'm just, I'm thinking, could you then add something that says something like, you know, is your mind open? Or, you know, I mean, so like, do we get this like yes or no, like yes or no, then are you open to hearing more? You know, I think that's like.
What if we did like a spectrum? We could do between one and 10, where one is absolutely no and 10 is absolutely yes. What would you, where would you?
That's, I kind of like that. I kind of like that. That is, that is a little more nuanced because it is really true that you don't want to have to talk to people locally about that. You know, a lot of them are closer to the middle than, than like really crazily strong on one end of the other.
Okay.
Which, you know, shouldn't be how people take all of the factors into consideration. And it's like, to Tari's point earlier, there's a lot of, a lot of things to consider here.
Right. What were you going to say, Tim?
I said, but we're, we're, we're back, we're anchored on it, on metrics, right? It is a ranking system at the end of the day. Every, our, our whole business has been based on that last month or two.
So you think that's a good thing to be anchored on metrics?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, good. Yep, yep. All right. I, I think that's a, it's coming along.
Like the journey is, man, at the end of the day, how do you accept or set aside what we get, you know? We're going to come down to, you know.
Well, yeah, and again, I mean, I do feel like that they're probably through Reddit, like there'll be some, some answers which resonate with, which you, which, which, you know, we all as board members think, you know, resonate with our own values or with the, our more, more important values than others, you know? So, so we might, so, some of the answers, yeah.
This is exciting. So do you feel like, so right now, we, we sort of have three potential events. I'll just call them generically. One is this interactive online thing. Another is a not interactive online thing that, but that might take, you know, 30 to 40 minutes if you're going to do a little bit of, maybe you watch a presentation and then you fill out a survey about it. And then the third is this other one that takes five minutes. Do we want all three of those or do we, do we want to move towards to, or, or am I misunderstanding the online?
I, I think that's fine, but I would think we could, the, if, I would personally think it would be easier just to have the online one be, have the option for someone who's really thoughtful to spend 30 or 40 minutes on it and have the option for someone who's in a hurry but wants to get their point out there to spend five minutes on it. So I'm not sure whether separating those would be to our benefit or not. I, I would, I would probably, you know, that'd be like, right, here's a optional presentation to watch, here's an optional document to read about this. Or maybe, you know, your mind is, you don't have time to read that and do that, but you can still give us your feedback then. So that, you know, like, that should, that should take five or 10 minutes. But if you actually, but if you engage a little more with the document, then it could take longer. I, I don't know. That, that'll be, just because I, again, if we have, if we have like two different kinds, if we have two different kinds of online surveys and three different, now we're trying to have three different types of data, one from in-person, one from super thin, one from intermediately thin, like it just, it starts to get confusing in terms of how to weigh all these things.
Okay, so I feel like I'm not sure if I'm hearing you right. So I'm trying to write down what I hear and let's fix that because I think I didn't get it right. So I feel like the third event, what I have labeled number three right now, I feel like we're all kind of on that. And I think you're saying, well, some people might take a long time to provide that open-ended response and some people won't. And so that's, that could be thick or thin or medium or thin. But then what about this first one or two? Is that, is that two separate things or like, what are we picturing that looks like?
I, I mean, it could be two separate things though, and I'm, I'm sorry, I'm like being the one who's talking a lot here. But I mean, what I might think is that you would just put that thin page up front and then some people are going to stop there and then some people are going to go deeper into the, into the, some people are going to want to write a paragraph about how this relates to their values. Other people are just going to want to put their number in there and move on. So I, I, I guess I just don't know whether, we could separate them. I, I don't know what, if there's any other thoughts. I, I would, I would think you would keep them together just because it reduces the amount of outreach and confusion in terms of reaching to the public saying, well, if you here, click this link for this survey and then go to this link for this thing. And, you know, just to keep it simple, like come to this page, engage.
The user is saying like, have the, the one to 10 and, and then like a comments box or something like, if you want to say more, say it here.
Something along the lines of that, right. And, and, and the specific comments box would ask this question that we're asking about using the vision statement to analyze the status up there, you know?
Yeah, please, yeah, use this as your, your, your prompt or whatever, yeah, or guide, yeah.
So would we have a live event of any kind?
Yeah, I would just wonder if that's our meetings though. Like if we're, we're asking for this, you know, we're giving multiple levels of opportunity to engage like at a survey level. We also have our meetings, which this will be a big focus, I would think, coming back right away in the fall. And so is, is, if we're going to have to do it digitally anyway, and we're, we're saying that one of the challenges is having board, you know, different board members in different silos, and then how do we get all that information together? I just feel like the board meetings would be that, that time. If we, we are, you know, I think we started this conversation tonight around like, how do we get more like communicate that community participation is an ongoing process and not a, a one-off event? And I think that, you know, we, we need to do a good job in August and September putting it out there that these are the events, our board meetings are the event. I'm assuming this will dominate our agendas for the first couple of meetings.
Well, the only thing I would say about that is that the, the, like the kind of visioning workshop events that we had, had, you know, had, you know, group of breakout groups and community members could talk back and forth to one another. And currently, the way that, I mean, we could do it at the same time as the board meeting. But, you know, currently, it's just like a one-way, here's my statement. There's not.
Sure, yeah. Do you know, can we do that, like? Rules-wise, can it be, can it, as long as it's all recorded or something like that? Is that legitimate as far as our board meeting structures?
I think it would be as long as we can record it and I, I can ask Curtis about that. So then. We have.
I just worry about meeting fatigue, you know, and I think that.
Absolutely.
A representative from the teachers say that folks were pretty tapped out in the spring. I cannot imagine a scenario of going back in the fall, that's not gonna feel, you know.
Like they're also tapped out.
Still not gonna feel equally tapped out. And so I just wanna make sure that we're not, we are tapped out, we're parents and we have full-time jobs and we're doing the board thing as well. So I just wanna make sure we don't create resentment around the number of meetings and that we use our time efficiently. So if we can do that, like, that would be my push is like, let's make some time for this in our meetings. And if we have to do, you know, one four-hour meeting versus, to get this in there versus having multiple engagements over, you know, weeks and weeks, I think. I mean, my appetite for that is better, but.
I guess the only question is, so we wanted to do this. I guess if we could, I don't see how it really fits into our schedule unless. Unless we, unless we, because we're gonna, we don't wanna do it before we finalize the data packet.
Not if we're asking for them to evaluate it essentially.
Yeah, and then the, the next board meeting, we were gonna have our discussions and reflection prior to the vote. So I don't think we wanna do it, I guess we could do it prior to having our reflections. But again, I think, you know, what we heard from, from like about the, several board members about the superintendent's decision is that it's, you don't, it's not necessarily great to get like an hour and a half of just straight up information and then do your reflection, like it helps to have a little bit of time for digestion. So, I mean, unless we wanna add another board meeting in the middle there.
Yeah, I said the alternative, I guess, I think we built a conservative schedule, knowing that schedules tend to, you know, sort of, we assume that schedules tend to inflate themselves. And I also see like late fall had, sort of at the bottom of what you're sharing, Jonathan, some public engagement activities. And so I would just wonder about sort of swapping, just bumping us down one meeting. And that if we had, what I'm seeing on the list right now, the 9/23 meeting be this sort of chunky, community-focused meeting. And then the 10/14 meeting being our board discussion reflections on the data decision-making, whatnot. And then have the vote be that following meeting. Whatever comes after 10/14. So I, I don't know what we'd have to do to sort of like bring this back to the board.
Yeah, I don't mind that necessarily, but I know that there was some concern about the extension of the, like already, it seemed like we were pushing this later than we wanted to. We added a board meeting in there to give us the, you know, to separate some of these pieces. Or I think it was really just the finalizing the data packet and, and. And going back and forth to that. So I do, I have a little bit worried that it's. It's even stretching a little bit further than what.
I feel like, I guess I assumed when we put that in our schedule that we were gonna build in one extra, at least one extra meeting. For this purpose explicitly.
Between these two.
So we've already, we already used our board meetings for this express purpose, right, last fall. Right, we facilitated, we invited the public to sit at the table. I mean, our DOT exercise, that was all facilitated within our board meeting, right? It means that's our business. And we had a meeting between 9/9 and 9/23. And, and I, I agree, I would consider swapping the 10/14 to a, to a later date. And as the chair of the finance committee, I, no problem, just push that.
Throw that weight around.
But I think, you know, I think we're on to something here. I mean, I feel like we've already used our board meetings for this very thing. And. What are we doing again?
We could, it does, it delays things. It's nice because it doesn't cram the schedule of people having to go to lots of meetings, but it does slow the decision-making process down. So you're, am I hearing you all saying that you don't feel like we should? Or that we should have a specific community engagement that basically. Is during one of our regular board meetings, thus delaying, extending the decision timeline out by one board meeting? Is that what you're all saying?
Well, I'm, I'm, I wasn't saying that. Jeremy and Tim were.
Oh, okay.
I, I mean, I would probably, if I was making this decision, I probably would pop a, a meeting in the middle there. I, I don't know. I mean, I'm all about rumination, but it seems like, it seems like there's a lot of time there. And I guess I do worry about. Pushing up against budget season, maybe, Tim, that's what you're saying, it's not, not a concern, but.
I don't think so. And I think, you know, since our world has become, you know, so predicated on online, you know, if we do an effective online, you know, campaign here and treat it like, you know, our, our live events will be Zoom events, right? So if we develop this online tool and get our survey together, get our information, about the information that we wanna share so people are primed. And then open, you know, two meetings to however long, you know, these meetings to, you know, take feedback and work through, you know, priorities. Plus we'll have the data in the background, so. Like absentee voting.
I feel, yeah, I, I also, I guess I, we probably need to, would need to put the schedule change, this proposed schedule change in front of the board.
Yeah, we can't just make that. But so, Tim, are you like, when, the way you just said it reminded me, you know, we did have an extended public comment for several meetings. Is that what you're thinking of or, because the, the things like what happened at Harwood and what happened at CrossFit were not in lieu of regular meetings, they were extra meetings.
No, I know that, no, I mean, so, no, I'm saying, you know, rather than, you know, have meeting atrophy. Use the, our board meetings like we had in the, you know, in November of 19 or whatever, in the last fall. To, or going into the summer, into the fall, how we even got here, right? So how did we get on the seven, eight, you know, merger or any of the other businesses in front of us right now is through the November 13, 2019 vote. So I'm saying we use a number of board meetings to facilitate and we allowed, you know, people from the public to come sit at the table with us and we did different breakout sessions or whatever. I'm just saying, it seems like our board meetings can be a vehicle for whatever we want, as long as it's not, you know, contradictory to open meeting laws and we clearly stake out that we wanna use this time. What else are we gonna be doing in the fall?
So much, I'm sure.
A few things on our plate.
But so it sounds like there's now, at least let's say, interest, right, in using regular board meetings. And not additional, right?
You're right, it is extended public, whatever, whatever we have to say. That doesn't feel like we're just gonna fit you into this meeting, right? We also don't want that to be, you know, the tone of this either.
I can remember, we did break into small groups about, we, with, with the, with the public about something. Well, I can't remember what it was, was it a bond meeting? But there was a time when, when the public came and sat around the board table with us and, and we broke into groups.
I think that was more like, it was really a board conversation. That was small group and then the public just, that was before we had, you know, 50 people in the audience on a regular basis. You know, the 10 people who were there just went around and listened in. So in some ways, that's a little different than what we were talking about, but. This is something, I feel like we've got, we've got a general structure, we could bring this back to the board. And also Kaitlyn's been working on a fall schedule too, so she'll have some better sense of, you know, what we've gotta get done and whether that's possible.
I guess the one thing that I see in, in favor of this argument for doing it is that, whoops, I'm trying to bring up the, where is the schedule? Oh, here it is, is that if we get the data packet and then we have one week to. Put, to how, to put together a presentation on this and then one week before we have our board discussion. That is a pretty busy two-week period just between receiving the packet and doing that. So I, I can see where you could, where you, where you might wanna push it at least closer to the board meeting. On the other hand, I guess, you know, with these meetings being remote, it is, it is less of a burden than, than traveling all around the district and, and so it does, you know. I guess I've a mixed mind anyway. As you say, there's interest there and we'll have to bring it to the board and see what they think about extending the schedule or not.
So John, can you just move up a little bit? Can you move back? Is it 8/26, your first board meeting?
Yes.
But I can, it feels like, there's also talk about like one of these being retreat. And then, so we've got 8/26, we sort of, is the first time we really basically see the packet. And then two weeks later, we finalize the packet, but people will be pretty familiar with it by then.
Yeah, you're right.
Christine, do you have something about this topic that you wanted to share?
Yeah, just quickly, because I was gonna say, I think Jonathan was right. At one point, we did, it wasn't extended public comment, which I don't know that was all that successful. But during some meetings, we carved out some time and we had small group discussions with members of the public. So that could be something in our regular board meetings. And then I'm looking at the, the question for your, your light engagement on that survey. Gives me a little pause because now we're back to the question of people, people might come to think that the board vote should go the way that that response goes, that yes or no. Like it, I think there are ways to get to that using. Information on our, possibly from that vision statement. And I also know that this probably wouldn't fit into this timeline, but it might help give us insight in the general budget process. Is that the election would actually give us an opportunity to do a survey that we know is gonna be filled out by a lot of voters. I, I think it might be possible to have surveys at the polling stations or, I mean, so it's gonna be tricky with the mail-in election, I'm going down a rabbit hole. But if there's some way we could do a survey in conjunction with voting, then, then you know it's your voters who are filling out those surveys, which are, it's also an important group to get to. And I think the part, the issue with the yes or no on that survey is sometimes, even though that's what the public, sometimes what the public wants isn't necessarily what's best for all the students or the, what the public is, how that group of the public is responding, that doesn't necessarily take everyone into account and do the right thing for all those students. I mean, you know, I, I don't wanna get into other examples, but I think there's all sorts of other issues where if you went with public opinion, it's problematic sometimes.
Okay.
Your, your comment about the elections reminds me of Bill Doyle's survey. He always got a good response on that.
But he had graduate students to analyze it. Okay, so we're, we're a little past nine. How are we doing with our notes? Oh, go ahead, Jonathan.
Oh, no, I was gonna also say, yeah, that, I think that that was a little bit like what I was, my, my worry about having there be a metric. But I do kind of like the, just in, in terms of, in terms of. Yeah, I think I had made a similar point and that it, it seems like it, it's, having a sort of a yes, no metric has a potential to. But that's why I kind of like having the one to 10 scale because it is more, more nuanced. And, and it's, you know, it doesn't break down as easily into just like 78% yes, 22% no, which doesn't take into account where, how, how strongly people feel on the issue. So it might, even though it is dangerous of having a numeric metric that sort of puts you under pressure to. To not go through your own sort of process of community feedback, everything you know, and all your own values. And your own interpretation of the vision statement. It's probably, probably still worth doing.
I was just playing with like, could we ask that question in a way that's like. It's not good yet, but I do think sometimes is that we know what we're trying to say with the question, but have we actually said that to somebody who doesn't know, isn't in our head? So anyways, okay, so I feel like, Christina, I, I do like this idea of the one to 10 scale, but maybe our question isn't there yet. Okay, so we're getting closer and we definitely have a good, or we think we, we have some specific stuff to jump off of. In terms of how to actually accomplish the community engagement in the fall. How do we feel about the question list? Do we feel like that's pretty well concluded at this point? Or has our ongoing conversation changed the way we think about that at all?
I'm comfortable with it. I think we should ask the admin team to answer these to the best of their ability. Don't get overwhelmed that, you know, figure out, like, you know, there's a lot here. And I think it also, you know, there's a degree of interpretation in terms, they'll have some, some leverage, some, some degree of interpretation in terms of, in terms of answering these. I think probably, I'm sure that they'll have some questions about, what do they mean by that? So, you know, just interpret them to the best of their ability and we could talk about it in August.
Yeah.
Is, is what I would say, but, but I don't, I, I think we've, I think it's pretty comprehensive. Any other thoughts on whether we need to revisit it further, Jeremy or Tim, or whether we are ready to let it rip?
Definitely ready to let it rip.
I agree.
Do you think that we should try to amend those questions, like this stuff? So, okay, so we're done with this questions and then do we need to do anything else to fix what, what we're reporting about the community engagement stuff in September?
You mean this, this minute's down?
This stuff that's in the bold, yeah.
Oh, let's take a look. I mean, at this point, maybe we should be a little firmer and just say, suggest that we use the current vision statement to analyze. Just because I think we have some pretty good. Unanimity on that question.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Feel free to type in here to make it better. I'm not, I have no need to monopolize this.
I would think, I would say, we could have a live or a remote event with breakout groups. And then I would just say, maybe. Just committee has interest in using regular board members and not additional board meetings. This almost seems like a separate thought.
Okay. Oops. But we would need to revise the schedule.
Yes.
Okay.
Is there a way to create a thinner engagement survey that's more than yes, no? Oh, there you go. I like tap out of them. And then I guess the only thing that I might say is. And this may just be my thought, I don't know if, but as much as possible to have the parallelism between the thick and the thinner engagement, having, asking the same question. Although maybe, maybe that's, maybe there's still some, I know if we were talking about whether there's two different, two different engagements.
I wonder if it, well, yeah, so we're, in this, right now, the way we've got it, we have two open-ended. Possibilities within that survey.
Yeah.
And that does give plenty of space if somebody really wants to go into detail.
Right, so I would, I guess I would, I don't know if we could call it a thinner engagement survey, but I guess it's an engagement survey with opportunities for thinner or thicker engagement, maybe.
Okay. Well, we, or just, just create a survey.
I'll just maybe say. Opportunity for quick response or more. Or a longer written statement. Or, yeah, longer written statement and, yeah, I don't know.
We could almost get rid of that middle question because. Then we're kind of, we've got this open-ended one afterwards.
Yeah, that sounds fine.
I think I kind of liked the, the thought transition and like, okay, so if this, if these are your values. Then how does that affect your seven, eight? Okay, so now how would you turn that into a, you know, a number? I like that. I like that process, but it feels a little.
I don't know, I, I wouldn't want to get rid of it completely because if we are going to get rid of it, I want to incorporate a linkage between the priorities and the.
Okay, so let's just keep it for now then.
Yeah.
I do feel like if maybe we could get at a better description for that one to ten scale than we've got. Because it is, well, we're still saying yes or no, but we need to find a way to get at a scale, or we, we'd like to get at a scale instead of a yes, no.
Yeah.
How likely would you be? How likely, how likely would you be to support or hope that?
Or even like if you had a hundred, you know, points that you could allocate toward merging or not merging, how would you allocate them or something? Because it's, it's like, I think if we say how likely are you to, it's still a fairly binary thing you're getting.
Doesn't seem like in surveys, it usually the language would be something like, how much in favor are you of this? And then I'd be like completely in favor, moderately in favor, neutral.
Okay, so something like, and so how many points do you think would be nice to have? Like it's one to ten or one to five?
Five is usually, it's more standard for surveys for some reason, yeah.
I was, I was always taught to, to use an even number because people will tend towards the middle of the pack. If you, if you don't make them choose which way they will.
Six is the deal.
Okay, I like that.
That's a good, I'm glad that you have some learning on this subject, just stumbling through the darkness like I am.
All right, this feels pretty good. Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments about the engagement stuff right now?
Yeah, I mean, it looks, some of it needs some larger board feedback. So I think that what we put together right now looks great.
Yeah, it's a good start.
Thank you, and any feedback on our work, like, yeah, any feedback on our work so far today?
You guys have all been jerks. It's been a pleasure working with you all and it's, it's also going to be a pleasure to take, what are we getting now, five, six weeks off? Yeah, but it has been a pleasure, but it's been nice being in this group. Was that Tim?
The quickest committee assignment in the history of the board.
Yeah, I was talking to Caitlin and she was asking something about, or no, maybe I was talking to Lisa and I was saying, well, we've got to do community engagement, but I'm not sure if the people on this committee really signed up to lead the community engagement. We signed up to do a, a schedule, so.
Yeah, it's funny, you did manage to squeeze the community engagement out of us, but I think it was a good group to do it with, so.
Yeah, okay, well, good, well, thank you.
Nice work, Terry.
Oh, thank you all, this is, it's really a pleasure to hear these different opinions and just enjoy trying to work through them. I really liked it. Thank you for your work. Okay, so happy summer, guys.
Yeah.
You too.
Are you guys traveling at all or you're just staying close to home?
Who's traveling?
My daughter needs to visit colleges, but I don't know.
Yeah, how was the Cape?
It's great, yeah, I mean, wasn't, wasn't as sunshy as we might have hoped for, but, you know, it was the first time out of the house.
I'm getting a little desperate myself.
Yeah, all right.
Enjoy it whether you stay close to home or wander a little further into safe zones.
Show us your face before the end of the meeting, mister.
Oh, well, you know what, it's funny because I tried to put on my, my, my camera, well, I don't, I have to go with my phone. I tried to do my, my, my camera and it, I was like, the light was shining in. I was, looked like the, I don't know if you guys, the cover of Godspell is what I look like. But now, now I'm struggling through this, hold on a minute. You guys don't have to wait for this, it's really not.
The big reveal?
Yeah, exactly, the big reveal. I think that it's, I think finally, okay, here we go.
You didn't get a COVID Mohawk?
No COVID Mohawk.
You're a co-hawk.
There I am, yeah, and I'm no longer.
You do look like you're in a recording studio.
Yeah, I like, this is a great way to do meetings, but I, I look like I, I'm a kid playing video games. So I don't, I don't really like to wear for, for this.
Air traffic control.
Yeah. That's right, I was trying to do the thing with my hand, but I moved my phone, so it didn't really work. I was trying to do this. My, my, I'm all, now my, I'm all out of sync too, because there we go, now I can actually look at you guys. But, um, yeah, thanks for putting up with my blank self.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, talk to you soon.
Talk to you soon.